This is the April 28th meeting of the Porter County Council, Council President Rivas.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. We could all stand or say the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll say it too. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic.
With liberty, justice.
Liberty and justice for all.
Get in sync. Madam Auditor, can you do a roll call?
Yes, Councilmember Rivas.
Here.
Councilmember Justin.
Here.
Councilmember Larson.
Here.
Councilmember Paparad.
Zoomed in.
Councilmember Sims.
Present.
And Councilmember Whitten.
I'm here, Madam Auditor.
Thank you. Let me just start off by saying something. You guys, thank you very much. This has been difficult. I know we like to get together. I know we like to debate things. It's a lively group. And trying to get through these last couple of months and doing our business hasn't been easy. So thank you for your patience and everything. And I'm certain next month we'll, we'll be able to see each other's shiny faces at the county. So. All right. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes, the March 24th, 2020 minutes.
Make that motion.
Some motion by Councilman Whitten, I think a second by Councilman Paparad, maybe.
Yeah.
That works.
Okay, can we get anything on the question? Can we get a roll call on that, Madam Auditor?
Yes, Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Paparad.
Yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitten.
Yes.
And Councilmember Rivas.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
All right, Madam Auditor, can you give us first reading?
Notice the taxpayers have proposed additional appropriations notices hereby given the taxpayers of Porter County that the proper legal office of the county of Indiana will meet at the government administration building at 155 Indiana Avenue, Don Cerezo. On April 28th, 2020 at 5:30 PM to consider the following appropriation judgments to company budgets for the year 2020 and to transfer any further business to the council. General fund, $10,000, data processing equipment, $40,000, EMA hourly, $17,168, Parks Operating Fund, 1179, Advertising 2000. Drug Task Force Fund, 4010, Auto Truck and Equipment Supplies, 5,000, Cable Franchise, 4906 Roads and Taxiways, 294,502. And Local Income Tax Fund, 1112, funds transfer, 120,000 and 80,000. Taxpayers bearing at such meaning shall have a right to be heard thereon. The appropriation as judgment says finally made will be referred to the Indiana Department of Local Government Finance where applicable, the DLJF will make a written determination as to the sufficiency of funds to support the appropriations made within 15 days of receipt of a certified copy of the taken. Vicki Urbannick, Auditor of Porter County, changes to the meeting time or places needed to comply with the governor's stay at home executive order will be posted on the Porter County website published April 17th, 2020 in the Chesterton Tribune.
Thanks, Vicki.
All right, first item up is Commissioners Lit Fund, additional of $120,000. Funds transferred to the Expo and $80,000 funds transferred to Memorial Opera House, the reason operating expenses for the Expo Center and Memorial Opera House due to COVID-19.
I'll make a motion on both those, Jeremy.
Second that.
Motion by Councilman Whitten and Councilwoman Graham. Any discussion on the question? All right, can we get a roll call, Madam Auditor?
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Which one?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Did we lose Jeff, you guys?
Sounds like it.
He should be on the.
He's, he has exited.
Okay, hopefully reconnects. So little technical difficulty there, Madam Auditor. Can you move on with the roll call?
Yes, Councilmember Paparad.
Yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitten.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivas.
Yes.
And Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Now, I'd like to, I'd like to, Jeremy, maybe for our next meeting and the meetings thereafter, if we could get sort of a running report from the MOH and the Expo on their sort of their expenditures and their revenues coming in so we can keep a track on this. I know that's kind of a moving target with, with COVID-19 when folks are going to be getting back to places like the Expo and the Opera House, but I'd like to, I think this board should have a, an ongoing update on that.
Okay, that's a, that's a good idea, Dan.
Okay, I will work on that.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Got it. All right, next, under Commissioners is the Cable Franchise Fund. There's an additional for $294,502 to Roads and Taxiways. The reason funds depleted, the additional will come from reimbursements.
Motion on that one as well, Jeremy, to approve.
Just in a second.
Motion by Councilman Whitten, submitted by Council, just gushing on a question, and it looks like Jeff Larson is back.
Elvis has come back to the building.
We get a roll call on the additional for cable franchise, Madam Auditor.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Member Paparad.
Yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitten.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivas.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
And Councilmember Jess.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Now, Vicki, this says that the funds will come from end out reimbursements. What's the timing on that? Do you have any idea at this point?
No, I don't. No, but the balance in the fund is pretty stable.
Okay.
$304,400.
Okay. I just was curious about when the reimbursement would come.
For consideration is Superior Court Judge Drenth. It's a transfer 900 from legal to office equipment, 109 from interpreter to office equipment over 100. It's to pay for a mixer for the audio equipment.
Motion on both.
Get into the DJ. Motion in a second by Dan Whitten and seconded by Councilwoman Graham. Roll call, yeah, Madam Auditor.
Councilmember Paparad.
Yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitten.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivas.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
And Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
All right, next item is IT. Now, I, on this, you guys, I spoke with Scott McClure again on this, and he indicated that this could be tabled again until next month. Not, not certain that the work could be done. It's needed, but he indicated it could be tabled. That's our.
I'll make the motion to table it.
I'll second that.
The motion by Mr. Paparad to table, and I think it was a second by Mr. Justin.
Yes.
Technically, it stays tabled till we take it off, but that sounds fine.
So get a roll call on keeping it tabled, Madam Auditor.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitten.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivas.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Graham. Yes.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
And Councilmember Paparad.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
All right, juvenile probation. There's a transfer of 3,000 from contractual services to other supplies. The transfer needed to correct part of the previous transfer approved in February to the appropriate account category.
Motion to approve the transfer.
Second.
Motion in a second. Further discussion? Roll call, Madam Auditor.
Councilmember Whitten.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivas.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Paparad.
Yes.
And Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Next up is Sheriff. General Fund, this is an additional out of the general fund, $10,000 to returning fugitives. The reason, this line item that was turned over to the sheriff's office from the prosecutor's office in 2019, this is the original budget line item amount in 2017, 18, and 19. Now, this, this was when we moved this, some of this stuff from the prosecutor to the sheriff, and I believe last budget session when we reverted back. The sheriff's previous line item was zero, so it reverted back to zero. So he does not have anything in returning fugitives at this time. I believe that's correct, Madam Auditor?
That is correct.
And I, I thought in discussion, the previous line items might have been $6,000 or $7,000 for the prosecutor. And I do believe this is an increase that he's asking for, that he did ask for during budget session from what the prosecutor used to have.
I can clarify that?
Please.
Okay, the budget for 2017 and 18 in the prosecutor's budget was in fact $10,000. Then in 2019, it was increased to just over 12,000. But when this line item was shifted over to the sheriff's budget, the remainder was shifted over and that remainder was $6,535. Then in the proposed budget, that's what was proposed, 6,535, but of course, we, at your direction, scaled all of the increases back to the 2019. So that's where that 6,500 figure came in.
I did talk to the sheriff and he said they have been spending money doing this. I thought he said they may have spent roughly $5,000, $6,000 already, you know. He's, he's, it's been used in the past. It's being used, so.
Does he, does he receive revenue or get any sort of reimbursement for that?
I do not believe so. I don't.
I didn't believe so.
Just the cost of, of, you know, either his officers, he says, within, within range, within a couple state range, you know, if he can send his officers, then you're just talking about gas and maybe a hotel. But I think he mentioned, you know, somebody in California, so then you hire a company to do that. So I, I don't think there's any reimbursement whatsoever. I think it's just the cost of going, getting these fugitives and bringing them back. Yeah, that additional in front of you, $10,000.
You have a motion?
No, there's no motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilman Paparad and seconded by Councilman Jessen. Any further discussion on the question? Roll call, Madam Auditor.
Councilmember Rivas.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Paparad.
Yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
And Councilmember Whitten.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Drug Task Force Fund, there's an additional here out of that fund, not the general fund. It's 5,000 to auto truck and equipment supplies, the reason to repair and purchase equipment for vehicles.
Move to approve.
Motion by Councilman Whitten, seconded by Councilman Paparad. Discussion on the question? Roll call.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Hey, Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Paparad.
Yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes. Yes.
And Councilmember Rivas.
Moving on, the Health, Health Department, the Health Fund, there's a Form 144. It's, it's like a reduction. From 44,990, well, that's an increase there, I'm sorry, from 44,990 to 48,099 to Service Inspector. Then there's the reduction in the Sanitarian to 48,999 to 44,990. Reason restructuring department, department, and I think, Graham, I think you talked to the Health Department today?
Yes, yes. I talked to Letty Zapata today, and she said basically what's happening is that the Food Service Inspector was off ill. And he has came back now, but he can't be around chemicals like he used to be. So what they're doing is they're switching him to the Sanitarian two, and they're moving that gentleman up to the Food Service Inspector. So basically, these are two people that are on our payroll, but for the auditor's sake, they have to, to show what they're doing.
All right. What is good if they show what they're doing?
Yeah.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilman Paparad and a second by Councilwoman Graham. Any further discussion on the question?
And in this particular case, we're not, we're not changing the salary specific to the position, right?
I think that they, they are.
Yes.
Yeah, they're changing it.
One's going up, one's going down.
The Food Service Inspector is taking a cut in pay because he cannot go out and do what he used to do.
Yeah, I guess what I'm asking is the Sanitarian two has been at 44,990, and that same position will still be at 44,990.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Need a roll call?
Number Justin.
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitten.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivas.
Yes.
And Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Seven is zero.
All right, Park and Rec, Parks Operating Fund.
Move to approve the 2,000 bucks.
Second, yeah.
Budget, there's a motion, I, I thought by Mr. Whitten, and I'm not sure who seconded it. Graham. All right, further discussion on the 2,000 for advertising? Get a roll call, Madam Auditor.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Paparad.
Yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes. Yes.
Councilmember Rivas.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Moving on, EMA, this is a general fund. It's an additional of $17,168 hourly. The reason, part-time hire of Deputy Director to work May 1st through August 31st, 2020. And included in that would be a Form 144 hourly up to 2724 for the Deputy Director, and the reason, part-time hourly, May 1st through August 30th. You guys know. He, he sent you some information forwarded on, you guys, I think a number of you have talked to Lance, and this stems off him requesting a full-time person last budget session, so he was working on this. And then as we got into this coronavirus, you know, he activated all of his volunteers that were working, so he's mostly working off of volunteer staff. All he does have are employees. He did not have any hourly in his budget. This does, it's a specific amount, so in conversations with him, if it was approved, he, you know, I asked him to come back and report, you know, the duties and the tasks that this new employee took on, and this is something that warrants, you know, continuing on.
I have one question. Why are we putting it in a specific timeframe? Why not just have an hourly on it?
In conversations, it kind of got him out three or four months, Sylvia, you know, to see if it worked. I mean, and I think the amount equals what he wants to pay per hour. So I, he went out for what, four months? So he gave a reasonable timeframe, I think, to see, improve the worth.
Well, I, I, I'm very much in favor of him having some part-time help, especially in this, this crisis that we're in. And I, and he'll probably, I, I just didn't know why it was a specific timeframe.
I think, Sylvia, that maybe some of the discussion was, we wanted to see, you know, we're, we're in extraordinary times, particularly for EMA, I would assume, so we wanted to see, we wanted to give him the help that he was asking for during this pandemic time, and then maybe come back and see, instead of a forever new person, see what his needs were at that time and sort of assess it again. August 31st, I suppose, God forbid, we're still in the midst of a crisis in August, we could always come back and revisit it for longer, but it just seemed like an opportunity to give him a time period where we can evaluate at the end to see what his long-term needs might be.
Okay.
Do we, do we know how many hours this part-time position would be per week approximately, or whatever that extrapolates out to be?
Assuming it's 29 to 30. That's part-time, right?
I'm just still amazed Mike knew a word like extrapolate.
Extrapolate.
I tried to catch your attention, Dan.
Madam, Madam Auditor, in terms of part-time, you know, employees, what is the maximum they can work a week, is there?
I'm, I'm looking up what he submitted, and I think it was 29 hours a week. I'm looking it up right now in your packets.
As am I, let's see here.
Yeah, it's 29 hours. I'm sorry, I can't find it right now. But I believe it was said at 29 hours.
You need a motion, Jeremy?
Yeah, there's, there's not a motion on the floor right now.
Motion on the additional and the 144.
There's a motion by Councilmen Paparad to approve. Seconded by Councilwoman Graham. Any further discussion on the question? Lance has definitely taken a leadership role through the pandemic in the county, and I'll make certain that, you know, I don't know if you guys just report at the end, or if you want monthly reports of what's going on with the new employee and his task. He's more than accommodating, so.
I, I think that in August.
Okay. Can we get a roll call, Madam Auditor?
Yes, Councilmember Paparad.
Yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitten.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivas.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
And Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
All right, moving on. I need the council, there's a foundation budget. You know, I could lay a little groundwork for you guys, if you'd like, again. You know, we were in contact with Bruce Linder at Council on Aging, you know, as the pandemic hit, he, he did the right thing and stopped, you know, transportation as he had to with social distancing. So, you know, we give Council on Aging $450,000 a year for transportation. He indicated he could free up a little money and give back to the county to help out. So, you know, we had a few requests that were coming in, you know, Meals on Wheels and eventually Porters Township, Food Pantry. So he graciously cut a check back to the county for $22,000. Vicki created a COVID-19 relief fund within the foundation budget. So if we grant for the money from Council on Aging to this COVID relief, there's $22,000 we could do with that right now if you guys chose.
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer.
There's a motion from Councilman Whitten on the $22,000 transfer.
Second.
There's a second. Any discussion on the, the mechanics of that? So, all right.
Just to be clear, this is not a forever take from the Council on Aging. This, you know, we made very clear to Bruce Linder that this is, we're extraordinary times. He suspended transportation. This is not going to adversely affect his budget the next years. So are we, are we planning on reaching out to other departments to do the same?
We most certainly could, you know, because we give, and talking specifically to the foundation budget, you know, we give to the.
Enterprises, Family Youth Services Bureau.
Right.
Council on Aging.
Most certainly could reach out and ask those organizations if there's any, if they had to cut any services off, you know, during this time.
I would, I would also like to interject that this is a one-time thing because Bruce is, he's finding out that he might have further obligations when he restarts his transportation project. He's finding out that the federal government may require him to have an associate or somebody on the bus that will be in full dress with full PPE to handle the transportation patients, people that, you know, residents that come on board. So that's something that he never expected.
Yeah, we're not going to adversely affect the services to the seniors. That's.
Yeah, this is a one-time deal.
And you're, you're 100% right. Councilwoman Graham, I talked to Bruce at length today, and there's no doubt that his organization's going to have to adapt moving forward, you know, with regards to transportation. As, as we move forward and get out of this and guidelines moving forward. So I told him, you know, we, we can get back and, you know, enjoy each other's presence in person that, you know, we'll have him in front of us to kind of discuss, you know, what's going to happen to his organization moving forward and what's going to change. So, but, so we got a motion on the floor to make the transfer right now, a motion of $22,000. Can we get a roll call, Madam Auditor?
Yes, Councilmember Sims.
Yes. Yes.
Councilmember Rivas.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes. Yes.
And Councilmember Paparad.
Yeah.
So then underneath that is, you know, the question on the COVID-19 request. So now we, we do have a line item in the foundation budget of COVID-19 relief, and it's got $22,000 in it. As you all are aware, we have had a few requests come in from Meals on Wheels that I know Mike and I talked to. I'm not sure if anybody else did. We also had a request from the Porters Township Food Pantry. And I, and I know, I also, there was a request that came in from the.
Organization.
BNA.
Yeah, BNA, thank you, Mike. And, you know, they, one of their things was Meals on Wheels that they participated in, so I thought this kind of folded in with that, and then they were directed to an attorney law firm that said that they were helping, you know, free to nonprofits, you know, to work through the, the CARES Act. So there, there are some requests out there, and I'll just leave it at that. You guys, this is, you know, I think this group should, if we're going to do anything, we should do it as a group, obviously, make those decisions.
You're cutting out, Jeremy. I can't hear you.
Yeah, I can't either.
Well, I just, I just said, we're in the middle of a pandemic right now. We, we have an opportunity because of Luke's graciousness. Well, I just, I just said, we're in the middle of a pandemic right now. We, we have an opportunity because of Bruce's graciousness to um
Cutting out.
Return some money. So it's up to you guys what you want to do.
Uh, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion. I'm, I move that we transfer $5,000 from COVID-19 Relief Plan to the Northwest Indiana Meals on Wheels.
A second.
So it, yeah, it just wouldn't be a transfer. It would just be, we'd be spending money out of it. I, you know, I'll work with this on how to do that with, you know, joy. So I think I
Jeremy, you're really not, we can't hear you, but Vicky, I have a question. What's the proper, what's the proper motion here to, just to, it's not a transfer, it's not additional at this point, it's an expenditure. What, what do you need from us?
Basically, you're giving your approval to spend this appropriation on something specific.
All right, so the motion is fine the way Mike gave it.
Or to approve.
The expenditure of five, granting $5,000 to Meals on Wheels.
Yes.
There's a motion, I, I think, I don't know if you guys can hear me, there's a motion on the floor from Councilman Jessen, and I'm not sure who seconded it.
I'll second it.
And, and a second by uh Councilwoman Graham to uh grant $5,000 to Meals on Wheels. Uh, any further discussion on the question?
I do. So just to make sure that I understand it, because I know we've talked and actually I did have a conversation with Meals on Wheels, but this money will be used specifically in Porter County? Because I know they do services in Lake County, obviously, and
That was, that was
The letter I received said that it, it was uh Porter County's portion. And I would, I would say that specifically that maybe the motion could be made where it would be used for Porter County's
You can make a contingent on the money's being used in Porter County. And that's, I mean, a thought.
The mo- motion accepts that.
Second, those two.
Motion agrees to stipulate that it has to be spent in Porter County. The second agrees. Any further discussion?
You know, Jeremy, I, I'd just like to say that as, as we've had our conversations and gotten literature from Meals on Wheels and of course, everybody appreciates the, the value of the work that they do on a typical basis, but especially in light of uh the pandemic and so forth, the, their the need for their services uh is five times more than usual as they explained it. And so the work that they're doing with uh delivering meals to uh senior citizens. And I know specifically in the Bonner Center, they had 34 people that would typically rely on meals at the Bonner Center. And uh they are now taking care of those. Um, and I know even in 2019, there were 6,500 meals that that they delivered to 125 seniors in, in Porter County. Um, they do great work. They're desperate needs. Uh, I know the Porter County Commission, Porter County Community Foundation, along with United Way, uh tried to uh or supported them with a donation, as well as the Lake County Commissioners, uh helped support them, understand and appreciate the work that they do. So they've uh laid it out pretty clearly in terms of what the, what their, uh, what their needs are. And of course, they were much greater than the $5,000 that uh, that we're offering, but I think that's a an appropriate amount to at least offer our assistance uh for the program that they do specifically in Porter County.
I, I would echo that, Mike. I mean, um, in, in these particular times, I mean, they're desperate times. They call for extraordinary measures and I think we all understand the need to try to help as much as we can.
Well, I, I also uh think that uh it fits right in with Porter County uh Aging and Community Services because uh as Mike mentioned, they do, they did serve uh at the Banta Center. And can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm not seeing, okay. But anyway, I concur with uh what's been said.
All right, has any further discussion? And um, and I know just on, on this one, you know, there's been a lot of work just in, in, in trying to make this happen. And I know um Commissioner Blaney was instrumental in it, along with Bruce, you know, has been really um yes, for us to even have the opportunity uh to do this. So I just want to make sure that, you know, recognize those, those two and Mike and Dan and everybody. So on this specific one, there's a, there's a motion and a second. Um, can we get a roll call, madam auditor?
Yes, Councilmember Whitten?
Yes.
Yeah, that was a yes.
Uh, it looks like her screen froze.
I mean, it's a, it's really a yes, Vicky.
Been cutting out a lot.
There she is.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Jessen?
Yes.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Popron?
Yes.
And Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Seven to zero.
I didn't hear my name, but I'll say yes, and but the seven zero comes in. We, we did have another request that was sent to us, or, I mean, you guys, what's your pleasure?
Can, can I jump in here, Jeremy?
As always, I think you're the senior person on this council.
Dan doesn't like that, so watch it. He has more time. I was down earlier. Um.
It's true.
I know we got a request from Portage. I was going to throw it on the table. If it dies, it dies. And we split the rest of the money between the Portage Township Food Pantry, uh Westchester Township Food Pantry and Hilltop, the three biggest food pantries in the county. Spread it around and maybe it'll do the most good. I'm just throwing that out on the table. I guess you consider that a motion too, I guess. I'll make the motion.
So I'll second that for discussion. So the, the thought here, and I know the other two have, there's not been an ask. They've not asked us, right, Jeremy?
I, I don't believe formally, uh, uh, there, there's been an ask by the other two. I know Portage Township Food Pantry formally did, so I can't say, um, you know, Bob was working on this yesterday in conversations, reaching out, doing some research, you know, to see, you know, where we could give the most um effect to those in need. So I know Bob was working on it.
So Bob, did you have an opportunity to talk to the other two?
No, I have not. I've just thought they're the three biggest in the county. Actually, there's 11 in the county. Um, but a lot of them are church affiliated. I just thought these are the three biggest in the county. The need in Chester is probably not as great as Portage. Valpo's probably as great as Portage. I'm just, I'm just making a motion. If it goes anywhere, fine. If it doesn't, I just thought we'd spread it around. That's all. Not, Portage doesn't get to have all the money, just part of it.
I'll second that motion. Who's got the cuckoo clock?
So the, I mean, my only concern, and I don't disagree with that, Bob, but uh my concern is that probably, you know, if we watch the numbers on the coronavirus, I mean, Portage Township is clearly leading the pack. And if the thought here is to help these areas through this uh horrific time, it would seem that the area with the most need should get proportionately
Yeah, I, I agree with that statement up to the point where Portage Township has the largest budget of all the township trustees. Um, it's not like Portage Township is broke. Uh, I'm just, I'm making a gesture here. Um, Mr. Clancy has a $9 million budget. Uh, probably, that's all. I, I'm just, I ma- I made a motion. That's it.
There, there's a motion and a second on the floor. And just for, for clarification purposes, this is not to the township government. This is the Portage Township Food Pantry. It's a separate entity altogether. This is a purely volunteer entity that, you know, helps those in need with, with food. So there are two different things that you're, you're discussing there, township government and food pantries. Cooperation, um, and actually the Portage Township Food Pantry is now in the same building as a um township trustee and us. We now share a building, one of our new buildings that we constructed in North County.
I, I, I guess I would, I mean, I'm not, I'm not opposed to splitting it up. I guess I, I just think that we should put the largest proportion to the area that
Do you want to do it by population?
Now that's going to require math.
If I, if I could just jump in here for a moment.
Well, we have an auditor.
Very good one. Yes, Mr. Jessen?
Yeah, if I could just jump in, I uh, I have uh extreme appreciation for what the uh Portage Food Pantry does, what the Westchester Group does, what Hilltop does. I, I think all of them are doing great work. Now more than, now more than ever. But as we're talking about divvying up, uh, what, the $17,000 that that remains, we're talking about doing it based on population. We're based on, we're talking about doing it uh with one of the three specifically requesting it. The other two haven't even requested it. We'd be doing it uh in advance of knowing if there's other townships that would require some help or other food pantries that may have as desperate of a need as the three that we're talking about. So to me, it seems like it would be very premature without knowing the specific status or the budget of each of those uh entities. And also reaching out to find out if there's other entities that might be in more dire straits. And so I, I think, uh, I think we'd be jumping into it prematurely. And I think it would take uh more time and more study before we start talking about distributing additional funds.
I, I didn't say it was a good motion. I just made a motion. Here's what, here's what I think is going to happen. If we give $5,000 to Portage, which I'm not adverse to, next month, we're going to have the rest of them in our council meeting wanting the same. I'm just trying to split this money up equally and get something out to everybody.
Yeah, this is a one-time shot.
Yeah, but I'm, I guess I'm looking at this like we're, we are calling, we're, we're answering the call to action from a group that has said we have extraordinary needs during the Corona pandemic. And clearly by all numbers that were given uh by the Health Department, Portage Township has the highest numbers. I'm not saying we shouldn't give money to the others, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't entertain requests from others. What I'm saying is the area that has clearly from the Corona numbers displayed the highest amount of uh confirmed cases that we, they have asked us specifically for help. And I think that we should give them help. So I understand what everybody else is saying. I'm not saying others don't need it. They haven't asked, they haven't approached us, but the area that is being affected, at least from the numbers we're being given, the most has reached out for help.
Have we, have we specifically seen uh where that need is from the Portage Township Trustees' budget? Do we know where they're at with uh, with income and expenses and food distribution? We, we, we got a pretty comprehensive review from Meals on Wheels in terms of their process and their specific needs. Did we do the same thing with Portage Township Food Pantry?
Well, again, we just make clear it's not the trustee's offices and, and his government budget. Now, I, in talking to Brendan, I think he did allocate um money to the food pantry also. So the township has given money. I know in the letter, uh, I, I think it the pantry served 1,917 families and approximately 38,400 meals to date. So in, in terms of wanting to review the food pantry's budget, I, I'm sure that's absolutely available. So in, they, they're 100% volunteer organization. And I know Brendan, because it's, it's also i- is normal, it's an older generation that does most volunteering and that's out there helping. So, so that they don't put themselves in harm, in harms way with this COVID-19, have not been able to assist. So that's why you'll find Brendan out there with a mask on, you know, two days a week handing um food out to those that are coming um to that North County complex. So in terms of, I mean, if you want data, information, it should come from the food pantry, because this is where that um assistance would go directly to.
Yeah, and that's fine too. So to see their balance sheet perhaps uh would be good. And then we could make a better determination of their needs.
And I, well, with that said, and I do appreciate that, Mike, I, I was never apprised of the Meals on Wheels balance sheet. I know they gave us information of their request, but I certainly didn't see their, their income, their balance, you know, their expenditures and their entire balance sheet. I was not um given that information. So to, to ask a 100% volunteer group for their balance sheet and not do it of a very large organizations with full-time employees, I think it's unfair.
Well, I, I guess, Jeremy, what I'm, if I could just say, what I'm, what I'm trying to say is that uh, again, the work that they do is awesome. We, we appreciate it uh as a county, as a community, but I'm saying that as we try to uh gauge one pantry's needs versus another, it'd be helpful to have some sort of documentation or some sort of uh financial information to review to help us determine who truly has the greatest need.
And see, I'm not looking, I, I guess I'm looking at it differently. I, I understand what you're saying, Mike, and I don't necessarily disagree with that, but I'm not looking at it like this pantry versus that pantry. I, I'm looking at it like the food pantry in the area that by all accounts is getting hit the hardest by this Corona confirmed cases, has asked us for help. Are we going to help them? I'm not saying that their needs are more or less than others. I'm saying they've asked and they're clearly in the hot zone in the county. So I just, that's my thought. We, we help these guys out. We, we get some money into them so they could continue to feed the folks in that area that has been hit by the worst by confirmed cases. And probably is the big, we'll see how the census comes through, is the biggest city in the county.
Quite truthfully, do we even, uh, we, do we have any numbers on the Westchester and Hilltop?
Didn't get that part.
I mean, but, and secondly, have we asked for them?
No, I didn't.
I'd like for us to give $7,000 to the Portage Food Pantry and we can ask the other guys for information in our next meeting.
Well, we do have a motion and a second on the floor, Councilman.
I understand, I understand, but I'm just giving my suggestion.
So um, let's um, if there's any further, is there any further discussion on the motion that's on the floor?
Well, I'd like to ask Bob if he'd maybe look at that a little differently and maybe reduce. Not to say that Westchester isn't requiring as much, but you guys are absolutely correct on the requirement of base need. The issue is, is it seems like we're trying to give majority of that money away and we're going to have to have funding at another point. We know we're going to get asked again, just like Bob said. I relate to Bob, Bob, where he said that there's an issue with the trustees. They are first line of defense for people in those communities and their, their, their responsibility is to feed those needs directly, um, just like in those food pantries. And we've had contact with Matt Kaiser and other trustees and they are doing exactly that, just like Brendan and Clancy is. But the, the problem I'm hearing from you guys is that we believe Portage has the highest need. There's not a lot of information other than we've talked about it. So what if we reduced, what if we reduced the amount we were given Westchester um and reduced the two other amounts or just held them, Valprezo and or Center Township and Portage at 5,000, reduce Westchester to 3,000 and left a little additional money in that pot so we can address some of the smaller food pantries later? Would that be acceptable, Bob?
Yeah, I'll amend my motion. I'll, I'll amend it. I'll amend my motion to give, I, I like Dan's idea of giving 47, maybe, maybe Valpo 5 and then uh Westchester 3 to leave a little bit left over. And because Dan, Dan makes a good argument, Portage has been hit the hardest. So I'll amend my motion to 7 to Portage, uh, 5 to Hilltop because they're the second biggest and then 3 to Westchester. What's that math workout? 15?
That only leaves 2,000 at the end for any other smaller food pantries.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm, I, I'm
I could go with that, Bob. If you, if you made that motion, I'd vote for it.
I will second, the second agrees.
7, 5 and 3.
I'll second that.
Councilman Popron amended his motion.
The second uh agrees with that.
Oh, Sylvia's the second. I don't want to steal her thunder.
I'm sorry.
Seconds concur. Um, and is it, is there any further discussion on this motion?
No, I guess only to uh additionally point out that I, to me, my opposition is uh strictly based on the fact that we're uh providing funds and a donation to at least two specific organizations at this point that haven't requested it.
Yeah, they will. They probably will next month when they find out that Portage got money without
They can't. We don't have any of her money.
Oh, yeah, though, they'll be, that ain't going to stop them from coming. So
We're going to have
the Expo Center running with no events. So we'll be back.
So Mike, your point's well made. I, I understand what you're saying. I'm just trying to get some folks in Portage some help. And it seems like from the discussion that we've all had here, this uh motion is the most likely way to get us there.
Call the question, please.
Madam auditor, um, if there's, nobody else that wants to jump in, I, I certainly don't want to cut anybody off to um, to add. This is a good thing. I know it's been difficult, but it's a good thing. And we're, we're doing a good thing here, so.
Yes, we are.
So if there's no further question, Madam Auditor, can you call the question, please?
Yes. Councilmember Reavis?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen?
No.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Poprod?
Yes.
Councilmember Sims?
No.
And Councilmember Wetton?
Yes.
Five to two.
Motion.
And the motion passes, and I'll work with Vicky and Joy on getting the right letters out with that. And I, I do appreciate you guys, the conversation. And Mike and Greg, I know where your guys' hearts are at, and I understand it. There, there should be no doubt, you know, where all of our hearts are at right now. I mean, we're trying to do something, you know, for the, for those in need right now. So, but, you know, we, we're here to make decisions on the finances of the county. So, you know, that, that happens.
I do, I do have a request, and I, I wish that we would visit tourism and a couple other departments, especially Expo and the other areas, to find out if we're talking about what we're doing with employment, how much money we're actually using in those departments, what's being utilized while they're there or while they're not there, and what funding are we going to be requesting in the, in the future? I mean, we're looking at giving this money away currently because we found there wasn't a need. But we're going to be faced with several needs here in the near future that are going to be beyond what we'll be able to supply. And so I would hope that we really, really think seriously about where that next group of funding is coming from, and that we can kind of stay the course on additional outlay.
Well, I think, guys, listen, I think, I, I understand that, Jeff, and I don't disagree with you. And there's one thing about this board collectively, you know, we are a conservative bunch. We have been a conservative board. We have been very close, closely watching the money, holding expenditures close to the vest. Tonight is an illustration that we're in, hopefully temporarily, different times, to some desperate times, the, the norm is being redefined. So we've tried to do what we can tonight to, to address that. But I, but in the end, we are still a conservative board, which is why I have asked earlier that the venues kind of give us a report on their, their, their ongoing budget changes, expenditures, revenues, just for that particular reason, Jeff, so we can kind of get a handle on where their, you know, there's shows being postponed and canceled at the Opera House. There's certainly events being canceled at the Expo. We're all going to be feeling some crunch from the reduced lit money. No doubt, folks aren't working. And when folks aren't working, they're not paying income taxes. You know, there's going to be highway money reductions. It's going to be all kinds of things that we're going to have to keep our eye on the ball. And there's a lot of balls in the air. So no doubt, no question, now more than ever, we have to be very watchful of our, of our expenditures.
Well, I'm going to publicly express my disappointment with the Tourism Board and the fact they can't find any money to give to the venues, and the building's locked. And I still see people at hotels, but I'll just say, I'm probably going to get in trouble for saying that, but I think it's going to be the first time.
No, that's all right. I, and so Jeff, to your point, we're trying to, and I believe it's being, it may be being set up this week. I'm not entirely certain that Councilperson Jessen, Vice President Jessen and I are trying to put together a meeting with President of the Board of Commissioners and Auditor Urbannick and the Attorney McClure to begin to do just that, begin to try to look out, you know, a couple months and the rest of the year of what this is going to mean to the finances of the county. So we're trying to get together and begin those discussions as a small group, and we'll definitely pass all that information on to the rest of the county both.
And I would highly encourage that because I've worked with some other counties, specifically LaPorte County, and they have, they are way out in front of us on the CARES Act, getting funding, toll road monies, and a lot of other things that we currently aren't doing. And so I would, I would encourage that meeting and encourage there to be some serious questions about what kind of formulation do we have? Have we put a COVID team together that can do this research? There's a ton of grant money out there, a ton of money trickling down towards us. And where are we currently at with that?
You know, Jeff, I, I was listening to the, I've been trying to listen into the governor every day, and they were just talking about that, what was coming from these bills. And I, the, the state just got, I, I don't want to misquote the number, but it was in the billions. And they asked if there was going to be a local government component, and there is going to be. I do, I have seen, oh, there are grants already going out to municipalities, but there was a large amount that came from the, the CARES Act to the states. Now, the states, we hope, and they're saying that there will be a, a local government component to that. So.
We don't, currently, we don't qualify for the HUD one because they've kind of overlooked this. And maybe Vicky can explain that a little bit more, maybe because our need wasn't quite as high as the other counties around us. But there was, there are some releases on some of those fundings already that we've kind of missed. So I'm, I'm hoping we can encourage the commissioners to move quickly to find out other funding.
Well, Mike and I, and all of us, we do have a good relationship with the commissioners. So we will move, you know, further those discussions and get in, and get into that stuff. So we, we have a tough year ahead of us, but this is a council and a board of commissioners in a county that will undoubtedly get through it.
Good.
So, and I, I was just told it was two point four billion that Indiana got from the CARES Act, two four, two point four billion. And from that, there should be a, a local government component. So we'll see how that plays out. We'll keep an eye on it. We'll aggressively go after that. So I know Madam Graham, I think you worked with Councilman Wetton on a resolution that you'd like to, to go over. Well, hold on, let's, let's clear the, I apologize. Can we get second reading? Let's clear up the, the financial part of this, and we'll move on. Auditor back.
Yes.
Jeremy, hold it.
Sorry, sorry.
I, I got to circle back to the EMA guy. On the additional, what's up to twenty-seven forty? And on the job description that says the salary is twenty-seven point two four per hour. Well, I don't know which one's right or which one's wrong, but they have to say.
Should say up to.
Well, that's not what it says on the job description in the back. And number strikes me as being an odd number, too. We'll clarify that before we get to second reading, that's all.
That's a good point.
So I, I'm guessing that the, the, the number twenty-seven twenty-four is probably reflective of the salary he requested in the budget session. I'm going to guess that that's where he's using the twenty-seven twenty-four from. And then, you know, I'm, I'm going to guess, I haven't done the math, that, you know, the twenty-seven twenty-four into the hours that he'll work over four months is going to equal seventeen one sixty.
I agree. I'm just saying the one forty-four says up to. If it, you know, as long as everybody's wearing that, I don't care. I'm just saying.
Well, he laid, he laid it out at twenty-nine hours a week and tried to do the numbers off of that. But you're right, Bob, but the one forty-four we approved is up to. So that's the end of that story.
Okay. Because on the back page, it says the salary is twenty-seven twenty-four. So as long as I'm aware of that, I don't care. I just didn't know if the one forty-four had to reflect. That's all.
Madam Auditor, are you, are you comfortable with what was passed?
I can't put my fingers exactly on what was submitted, but you can put an up to amount in your. Yes. And.
Well, the one forty-four that's in front of us says up to.
Correct.
I, I get Bob's, I get Bob's comments or concerns, but that's the one forty-four we approved, so. That's what it gets.
Didn't mean interrupt, I'm sorry, Jeremy.
No, you're, nope. As the second senior member of the council, you can, whatever you want. Can we get second reading, Madam Auditor?
Second rating?
Well, Bob, I guess I have a question. Bob, what are you, where are you seeing the salary is twenty-nine or?
On the, on the job description, the back page.
The only job description I have is the one that he submitted for the full-time salary. Full-time salaried person, that's the only one I have. So I don't know what you're looking at. I don't.
Whatever I got said.
We didn't, yeah, see, that, you're, that's weird, because that's, that is the one that he submitted that says, and we didn't approve this salary or this job description, did we? Because it says status, full-time salary.
And I agree. But then how can it be salary if it's per hour? That's okay. I mean, love, you know, I just, I don't care. I just pointed it out.
I mean.
Detail them.
What's your, what's your request, Bob? Do we call it and have a description change?
We're aware that one says one thing, one says the other, that's all. I just, you know, one says up to, and the other one says it is twenty-seven twenty-four.
Well, we did approve the up to.
Yeah.
But we did not approve the job description. We approved the one forty-four.
Correct.
Because I wouldn't have voted for a full-time salaried job description at this point.
I agree with that a hundred percent.
I agree.
And I don't, I don't think that's Lance's intention. I think he understands it's temporary. We're giving him some hourly to fill a request, and he's got to report back to us in a couple of months to see if we warrant this as a, you know, to keep that hourly or move it to a full-time moving forward.
The job description that he included in there, he clarified in his hourly paid position request that the attached job description, which is the full-time job, were the duties that would be included in the part-time position. Maybe that's part of.
Yeah, he submitted that when he wanted a full-time person, and then he just attached it now saying this is what the part-time person's going to.
That's what it looks like, yeah.
All right.
That's a good point, Bob, good point, actually.
Sorry.
No, can we get a roll call on our, go ahead with second reading, Madam Auditor?
Yes, whereas it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was appropriated in the annual budget, therefore be it resolved by the Porter County Council of Porter County, Indiana, that for the expenses of the tax unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the funds named and for the purposes specified subject to the laws governing the same. General Fund, a total of twenty-seven thousand one sixty-eight. Parks Operating Fund, eleven seventy-nine, two thousand. Porter County Drug Task Force Fund, forty-five thousand. Cable Franchise Fund, forty-nine oh six, two hundred ninety-four thousand five oh two. And the Lit Fund, a total of two hundred thousand. And that concludes second reading.
Motion approved, second reading, Mr. Chairman.
I got second.
There's a motion by Councilman Wetton and a second by Councilwoman Graham. Any discussion on the question? Your roll call, Madam Auditor?
Yes, Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen?
Yes.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Poprod?
Yes.
Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetton?
Yes.
And Councilmember Reavis?
Yes.
Seven to zero.
All right, that concludes our financial business. Councilwoman Graham, you and Dan worked on a resolution.
Correct.
Um, you want to, you want to take that over, Councilwoman?
Well, I, I was approached, and we all have observed what has been asked of the healthcare providers in this area. And I just feel as if, that we should reach out to them and let them know our appreciation. And I asked Dan Wetton if he would please draw this up for me.
So Councilperson Wetton, you know, since we're doing this remotely and there's not copies, do you want to read through it real fast?
Sure.
Sure. But it's a resolution by the Porter County Council. Whereas the Porter County Council, the council is aware of the inherent dangers to healthcare workers during the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas the council is aware of and hereby acknowledges the sacrifice that healthcare workers are making to continue to render aid to the sick and afflicted during this national emergency. And whereas the council desires to recognize and show their appreciation for the commitment and sacrifice healthcare workers are making during these difficult times, now therefore be it, and it is hereby resolved by the County Council of Porter County, Indiana, as follows. The County Council understands that in the face of mandated quarantine, ongoing spread of the COVID virus and increasing numbers of confirmed cases, healthcare workers of this county have continued to provide medical care despite the inherent personal risk to, that the Porter County Council hereby extends its gratitude and appreciation for the hard work and dedication being performed by healthcare workers throughout the county, passed and adopted by the County Council of Porter County, Indiana, twenty-eighth day of April, two thousand and twenty.
Nice job, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sylvia.
Make the motion.
Yes.
I'm not sure, I think, was that Bob, Mr. Poprod? Mr. Larson with the seconds. So any further discussion on the resolution? So can we get a roll call on a resolution? Madam Auditor? Did I miss something?
I think she's froze up again.
Yep.
Well, Councilman Wetton votes yes. How do you vote, Councilman Poprod?
Absolutely.
Madam Auditor, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Oh, she's back.
The resolution.
I'm here. Okay, Councilmember Jessen?
Yes.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Poprod?
Yes.
Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetton?
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis?
Yes.
And Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Seven, zero.
So I, I appreciate that, you guys. It's well deserved, but I want to make sure that, you know, we're not leaving anybody out. There's the police officers, the firefighters that are out there, even the government workers that are still making sure our police and firefighters are being paid like our auditor, showing up to work every day. We want to thank them, or the steel workers, or the construction workers, or the grocery workers that are going out there every single.
Absolutely.
And there really is no opportunity for them to social distance. They're going out there, keeping this economy going. So I, I think that's important. And everybody in Porter County, all the citizens, what they're doing, everybody's chipping in, and we're going to get through this. So, you know, just to, to build upon your guys' resolution, I, I think we need to recognize everybody in Porter County who's playing their part.
I would agree.
I agree with you.
This certainly wasn't exclusive. It was, it was, it was just a group that came to mind, but you're absolutely right, Jeremy. There's so many folks out there.
Quite truthfully, I was approached in the first week, week and a half into this, and that's why it was mentioned, earth, our healthcare workers. However, I do appreciate what you're saying, because it takes all of this to get this done. And we're doing it. We are really doing it in Porter County.
We are. And with that said, and I'll make sure everybody gets a chance to talk. If we can turn to the esteemed Harold Harper for, you got a, you got an attorney's report?
The only report today is you had, I think Dan had asked at the last meeting for a summary of the recent federal coronavirus legislation and its impact on the county budget. And I, as everyone's aware, had submitted an, a memo to, to, to all council members regarding that. And I don't want to waste a bunch of time, but essentially dovetailing with what Jeff had said, you know, the CARES Act is the, is the, the biggie, the one that we hear about quite a bit because of the Paycheck Protection Program loans under the CARES Act. But there was also a component of significant funds for municipalities. The, the problem is, is under the CARES Act, the first iteration of it, any direct funding to municipalities was limited to counties, cities, townships with populations over five hundred thousand. And so the, any monies that the county, that Porter County would be eligible for under the CARES Act would have to go through, as it's been discussed, through the state, the money that the state gets from the federal government through the CARES Act, that any direct payment to Porter County under the CARES Act, we're not eligible for because we don't have more than five hundred thousand residents. Now, why they picked that number, I'm not sure. But there is a lot of money, substantial, I shouldn't say. I, I guess it's relative, too, but there's, there's going to be some money available for Porter County through the state, through the CARES Act. But in terms of a direct payment, there's not anything available, at least right now under the CARES Act. I, I think the bigger impact, at least immediate impact for the county in terms of the recent federal legislation would be the, the Families, Families First Coronavirus Act. Families First Coronavirus Act, which essentially, and it's, and again, I don't want to go go on too, too long, but expands uh, the Family Medical Leave Act and provides two weeks of paid uh, emergency medical sick leave. And it does apply at 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 either full time uh, rates or two thirds, depending on the reason behind the request. And it does impact the county because counties, uh, it applies to the county. Um, and because unlike private employers um, under five hundred uh, employees, the county isn't eligible for a tax credit. Uh, private employers, if they have to pay monies under the either of those two provisions of the Paying First Act, private employers can get credit for that through payroll tax, but uh, the municipalities cannot. So that's, it's sort of an unfunded mandate, at least at this stage. Um, I, we're not going to really know how that's going to impact I, the the budget, you know, until we see, you know, how many county employees are going to take advantage of that. But um, I think that's something that the county needs to, the council at least needs to keep in the back of their mind. And, but other than, other than those two, I I mean, there's, the the bigger issue is going to be, I think, not so much the federal legislation as it is the just the the impact on the, on the economy of the virus. Uh, so but again, there's, I'm open to any questions anyone might have. Just feel free to give me a call.
I'd just like to build on that, Harold. There's Todd Young has a CARES Act, all this uh, information online. You guys can reach out to um, under youngsenate.gov coronavirus and there's a huge resource there um, for all that same information that he just shared with uh, with us. So it's a, it's a great opportunity to see what's available.
Yep. Yep.
Harold, for that, um, so I I think that covers everything on the agenda. Is there any other matters that may uh? Um. No?
I'm in the motion to adjourn.
Second?
There's a motion and a second to adjourn. I I'll just finish with one kind of public service announcement. Um, and Mike might be able to build upon this, you know, and watching the the governor's um, daily press conferences, it it seems and Sylvia, to answer some of your questions, that scene is ramped up, you know, from the states and local now. Um, the governor did start with I U P U I, a um, random sampling of the state, and I know Mike was involved with that over at Ivy Tech over the weekend. And I I heard today that they're going even further. Now they're partnering with um, Optum Health Services and they're going to begin to even um, this won't be part of that random sampling. They're working with the I U I Medical.
Right.
This now is just going to be offered to to people with 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 any kind of symptoms. You can call and get pre-approved. You don't need a doctor's approval. So I believe they're starting next week with thirty sites and it's supposed to expand to fifty. So I know Sylvia, you were, you've been various.
Yep.
And Mike's been involved with this with Valpo, so I just want to, you know, there is going to be more testing available to the general public, um, starting next week, I believe, and Valpo is going to be a site of that.
That's very good, Jeremy. Good information.
So. All right, with that, uh, there's a motion and a second to adjourn. Can we get a roll call on adjournment, Autumn? Auditor Urbanic?
Okay, Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Poprod?
Yes.
Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Councilmember Witten?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivas?
Yes.
And Councilmember Justin?
Yes.
Seven to zero, adjourn.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everybody.
Goodbye. Stay safe, everybody.